Welcome. Today, and a few minutes late is the time and place for the March 9, 2021 Royal Planning Commission meeting. And I will start with the call to order and the roll call, and I'll ask the planning commissioners to give their appearance. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor President, Royal Oak, Michigan.
Yes, forgot to tell you, you have to say where you're at. Commissioner Douglas.
Carolyn Douglas in Royal Oak, Oakland County, Michigan.
Mr. Klooster.
Eric Klooster, I'm in Northville, Michigan.
Ms. Beaky.
Anne Beaky, Royal Oak, Michigan.
Mr. Gantina.
Woody Gantina in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes, Paul Curtis here in beautiful Royal Oak, Michigan.
Beautiful and warm. And I'm Gary Casada, the chairperson, and I'm also in Royal Oak, Michigan. All right, now that we've got our technical, our technical delivery system in order, the first order of business is the approval. Well, it really should approve the agenda here. I don't see agenda approval. Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda? Doesn't sound like it. All right. So we'll go to the approval of the minutes from the February 9, 2021 meeting. Is there comment, questions, or a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Mr. Gantina moves to approve the February 9 minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, second by Ms. Beaky. All in favor? Why don't we just do that by acclamation? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, very good. Hearing seven, I'm an aye, seven yays and no, or seven yays and no nays. Meeting minutes are approved. The next issue is the public comment on non-agenda items. I assume I'm asking Carol that, but maybe I'm asking Doug that. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
There was no public comments received.
All right. Well, then the, we move on to new business, and that would be, the first would be the public hearing on the capital improvements program for the 2021-2022 fiscal year. Doug, can you do double duty here and bring us up to speed?
Yes, before you this evening is the annual update to the city's six-year capital improvement program. The city commission does require a recommendation from the planning commission on the program to use during their annual fiscal year budget process. Presented program is going to be submitted to you tonight from Director of Finance Julie Rudd. She's also here this evening. Should you have any specific questions? As far as action, the need of resolutions in the attached memo for this evening. If there are any additions, changes the planning commission wants to see, they should mention those specifically within the resolution. Matt, I can turn it over to Julie if you have any specific questions on the program.
I have a quick question on the program, Doug. I just wonder for future use, in the third paragraph down here, it mentions that one of the things that is budgeted for is large studies. What would that include?
I would have to defer to Julie on that question.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Doug before we move on to the Director of Finance? Okay, seeing none. Julie, are you, are you there? Yes. You're muted. I think you're still muted.
Good evening.
Very good.
Sorry about that. Okay, so yeah, you were asking about large studies. So the reason we include large studies in the CIP, or at least I request that, really in order for budgeting purposes. And so a large study actually could include a city's master plan, a recreation plan, or even organizational structure study, maybe even perhaps like a wage study. So anything that really is over $10,000. And the reason, again, we include that is so we can see those large ticket items coming up early in the budget process. So we're not surprised, you know, when we go to do the operating budget.
All right, well, that answers my question. You have a further presentation on this for us?
I do not have a formal presentation. If anyone would like me to walk through the narrative document, I certainly can do that and describe the various sections, if anyone's interested. But it is the same as in prior years. We haven't really changed much to the layout.
All right, I guess I would look to the commission. Does anybody have particular questions or a request for the finance director to walk through the narrative? Or are we, are we feeling prepared to discuss or vote on? Mr. Gantina.
I guess I just have a question. If there's any specific items, you mentioned it's the same from prior, prior capital improvement plan. Are there any specific changes that you think are great enough to call to attention to maybe highlight those for us? Or is it literally just a duplication of previous years in the same format?
No, it is that basically, anything in the peach shading on the aggregate spreadsheet, I'm going to hold it up, that might look familiar. It's two-sided. The peach shading is new projects, and there is quite a, quite a bit of peach shading on there. And then the green shading is projects that you've seen before but are modified in some way. It could be the dollar amount, it could be the scope, it could be the year, things like that. And then really, the white shading is basically older things that aren't adjusted. So you can kind of tell just by taking a quick glance that things are either new or have been modified. So, and I think something of interest that is new for the planning commission is a master plan. So that would be, I think, of great interest to you. So that is in there.
Okay, so there is a, there is a master plan in this proposal?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, I'm going to get back to my video here. Any other questions for, for the finance director on this, on this CIP plan? All right, Commissioner Douglas.
Well, not so much a question as a, just a comment vocalizing what I intended to convey when I did this, that we've not only budgeted to do a master plan on long overdue, highly necessary master plan, but we budgeted enough to do it properly. And I'm very, very happy to see that in this budget. So yay.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussions, comments for many of the commissioners? I think that the, the package is rather extensive and, and I, I'm only slightly hesitant whether or not we need to do more on the record so the public knows what we've done here. But it's, it is on the website, and people can look at it. So I personally don't, I'm not asking for the director to go through it further. Again, does any other commissioner want further elaboration? Ms. Beaky?
I just have a couple of comments. First, I guess a question. Are we, are we going to have a public hearing? Or were there, are there public comments, or we're doing ours first? Or is that not part of the process?
Public hearing, I'm sorry. We, Doug is-
Yep, this is a public hearing. It was noticed as such. However, we did not receive any written or recorded comments from the public for it.
All right.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So I have, I have a couple of comments. A couple are general, and then I have a couple of specific ones. If we wanted, if that's acceptable, to go through that quickly. And I see, looking at the city commission's goals for this upcoming year, some of my comments kind of tie, I think, into some of the upcoming goals. So there may be these kind of modifications coming forward. Can I go ahead and just?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Overall, wherever I see in the capital improvement plan something that just says lower costs for the operating without any indication of how much or how, I sometimes, I'm a little hesitant, would like to see more detail there, simply because you can lower costs and have less service. If it's, if it's something like a road, it's pretty apparent. But anyway, just lowering of cost sometimes is misleading in terms of the quality of service. And in general, having worked on or looked at other CIP-type programs, I'm kind of missing in this, the citizen input piece. I feel like we're missing that upfront, in advance, maybe a livability thing, maybe an annual citizen input that starts to help us measure our performance on these different programs over time. And so I would suggest that is something that we would consider incorporating into the planning process in the future. And then just general comments, I won't go with each one, one by one. Wherever there's an opportunity where we're doing new paving, similar to the sustainability things we've been talking about, just better quality in terms of permeability, being environmentally friendly would be a consideration. I was wondering what it means when we say it's a prepaid sidewalk repair? That means the money's already in the budget? Is that just what that means?
That's a question for Doug or for Julie?
Yeah, the prepaid sidewalk is when we're not special assessing. I'm sorry, can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
So it's not a special assessment program that the individuals are actually invoiced.
So it means the city's paying for it, basically, out of other funds?
Um, part of that program where those are city flags that are being replaced, like for instance, next to a park or in front of a park, yes, the city pays for that portion in that program. But that, the prepaid, we are invoicing them that summer. And then if the city commission allows for a special assessment, that would be the next step, if the, if the city commission is in agreement to allow for the special assessment.
And I guess just a general comment on sidewalks, you know, the more we can repair instead of replace, I guess it would save money, but that's just my general comment. And the other thing is when I look at the multimillion dollars in road improvements, including some of the, the traffic calming, I think is excellent. I think wherever we have speeds that where drivers regularly exceed the speed, I would just encourage, you know, looking at the design of the road as much as we can when we're spending money on road repair, to actually consider the design as well, not just simple straight replacement where it's feasible. Anyway, and other environmental things like looking at roof replacements, whether or not there's something environmentally friendly we could do there as well in terms of, you know, again, we've talked about roof gardens or, we're getting into solar tiles. I saw that solar is in some of the vehicle replacements, or electric, I mean. So those kinds of things. So just generally speaking, things that are more environmentally friendly and more sustainable. And as far as, the last one I'll say is on parks. I've seen we're doing a lot of cord, you know, recycled rubber and artificial turf. And again, that just concerns me for the water table quality and whether or not going to those new materials is really beneficial. And I just ask staff to keep that in mind as we look at these replacements for the long-term quality of Royal Oak's water and soil. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? So Ms. Beaky, you didn't request any specified revisions, but I think, and Doug or Julie can give us some guidance. My understanding is that we've had a chance to review this. It's our charge to approve this to be, and recommend it to the city commission to adopt it. If we have revisions, we should add them to our motion. But if we don't have any, then the, the department has provided us on page two here with the resolution that would have to be voted upon. Page two of the, of our packet. Is there, if there are any specified revisions, now is the time to bring them to our attention. If there isn't, I would suggest that perhaps a motion is in order. Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I would move the resolution as proposed, eliminating any reference to any specified revisions. That is, approve the CIP as submitted.
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Need further discussion of this resolution? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote, the roll call vote. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Beaky.
Yes.
Ms. Gantina.
Yes.
Ms. Curtis.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So the resolution passes, and I hope it'll be well implemented. Where did Julie go? I missed, oh, there she is. She moved around on my screen. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next order of business is also a public hearing. This is the project, we've seen this project before, this is a rezoning from a neighborhood business to a planned unit development of 600 West 11 Mile Road. And I will request Mr. Hedges to bring us up to speed here.
Yes, this is an application for a final planned unit development. You reviewed the preliminary application at your December 8 regular meeting. Petitioner has since submitted a final PUD site plan and has made some revisions based on your approval of the last meeting. In your approval of the preliminary plan, you did ask that a setback be provided for development from 11 Mile Road equal to the one for the existing building to the west. Petitioner has added a setback for their building from 11 Mile Road that is within one foot of that existing building. Also required that this front yard setback be landscaped, and they have provided landscaping within their plans that would comply with frontage landscaping requirements under the zoning ordinance. Third requirement was the required masonry wall that is typically required either along the rear lot line or the, the alley line adjacent to the property. Petitioners proposing no screening at this location during their presentation. They can provide you with their reasons why they are requesting to have no screening of that area. The parking has remained similar to what was proposed on the last site plan. They have maintained the stadium-style parking, which was one of the options the planning commission approved on the preliminary PUD plan. However, they have eliminated the driveway to Laurel Court. The parking would now only be accessed from the alley. The alley, the entire width, the alley along their rear lot line would serve as a working driveway for the parking lot, and it also serves as a maneuvering aisle for space that would be immediately adjacent to Laurel. The last condition from the planning commission's preliminary approval regarding the seal and signature on the facade elevation for plans. Petitioners maintain seal of the licensed engineer on those plans, although it is a different design professional from the previous plan. There are some waivers to require zoning ordinance standards that will still be required of the preliminary plan. They will still need a waiver to allow multiple family dwellings on a ground floor. Depending on how the planning commission votes on the screening, they may need a waiver for required screening along with their lot line. And then they would also need waivers relating to using the alley for both the driveway along its entire width and also the maneuvering aisle for off-street parking spaces. Yeah, and this application would be a recommendation to the city commission. We'd be looking at making two recommendations within one motion. The first will be to recommend rezoning the property to PUD based on the criteria listed on page three of our staff report. The second part of that would be approval of the final PUD site plan with the contingency listed on pages three and four of our staff report that include both changes to the final plan prior to being submitted to the city commission and also the waivers that would be necessary for required zoning ordinance. If any commissioner has any questions, I can answer those. And I can let petitioners into the meeting for this case.
I have a quick question. So last time we gave a preliminary approval to the BOD and, and sent them back to do some more redesigning. So the preliminary approval of the PUD and the site plan, they go together? We, I seem to recall, we approved the, the concept of a PUD, but we didn't approve the final site plan. But these are things that are, that have to be approved together?
Yes, it's, the typical process for a PUD is you have a preliminary review, which is essentially just a review of the plan itself. The second step with the planning commission is a final PUD review, which includes a recommendation to both zoning property duty and recommend approval of the final PUD site plan. That is then forwarded to the city commission.
Okay, so if there's no final site plan approval, there's no BOD either?
Correct. They would, they would both have to go simultaneously.
Okay.
They're tied together under the PUD statutes under both state law and our zoning ordinance. Can't rezone a property to PUD without having a PUD site plan attached to it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hedges from the commissioners? All right. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Douglas.
No, we'll hear from the petitioner, and I have a question that I'll ask them.
All right. I don't see any other hands, or did I see one from Mr. Curtis there? No, all right.
Just a scratch of the nose there. I wasn't bidding on any auction items.
I thought it was like the sting, or something you were signaling me. So are the petitioners here? I see one. Let's bring the petitioners forth, unmute yourself, and give us your presentation. You've met some of the requests and not others. Please proceed.
Yeah, John DePore here, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yeah, so with the required the masonry wall to be provided on the north right-of-way public alley. I went to the homeowner there. That is an Airbnb, being utilized as an Airbnb. So I couldn't really track down ownership of the home. I went there a couple of times. So I really couldn't do anything on that.
All right, and I should ask you to introduce yourself, Mr. DePore.
Sorry about that, John DePore.
And your role is?
I'm the, I'm the builder for the, for the project.
All right, what about the other issues there?
Dan, could you speak, Dan Di Martinez is architect of the project. Can you speak to the parking, the stadium parking in the back there?
And Mr. Di Martinez, please, again, introduce yourself and state your role for the record.
Dan Di Martinez, Shelby Township designer of the project. The, the site plan, we provided the stadium parking as recommended in the last meeting. We used a 20-foot setback from that northernly property line so that they had, the cars pulling out in the alley would have the typical maneuvering lane of 20 feet. So we reduced the building and changed the sidewalks, and we also pulled it back from 11 Mile, and everything kind of fit nicely together for, to create that stacked parking, thus giving us our landscape requirements of landscaping along 11 Mile and around the back of the buildings.
All right, and you say you're the designer of the project?
Yes.
All right, tell us about what happened to Mr. Waltz and why Mr. Langard showed up and not an architect.
Well, we're using, you know, Scott Lickard, according to Michigan code, is, he's going to be the direct, he's going, it's going to be under his direct supervision of structure and design. So he is the, the design professional, which is allowed by the Michigan residential code. So he's the one going to be reviewing it at this time structurally.
All right, any other aspects you want to present?
No, the project is very similar to the last presentation as far as the rendering and size and look of the building. I still feel it's going to be an asset to that, to that street. And, and pretty much, it's pretty much the same project with a different parking orientation.
All right, are there questions for the petitioners from the, from the commissioners? Commissioner Douglas.
Well, yeah, the, the issue of contacting the owner, it seems to me that's a, that's knowable. I mean, the, you know, there are real estate records that tell you who owns the property. Or if you've ever used Airbnb, you can go in and find the property and find at least the person who operates the Airbnb. I sort of feel like there's a, you know, loss of due diligence here.
Well, the, the building, the parking is being backed into that wall. It's not really like headlights would be facing at the wall. We tried contacting them. We didn't go into that further, assuming it was an Airbnb and there was, it was, that's transient people living there, and it wasn't a homeowner, is where we stopped, but.
Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't here in December, but I, do I understand this particular issue that the commission instructed the applicant to include a masonry wall adjacent to a private property? And the response of the applicant is, it's an Airbnb and we couldn't get hold of them? Am I up to speed? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, it was, it is an Airbnb. And like I said, I went there a couple of times, both times, it was a different person when I went each time. The second person was the one who told me it was an Airbnb. The first people just said, yeah, they're not home.
Mr. Curtis, continue, yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, just because it happens to be an Airbnb now doesn't mean it will always be an Airbnb and this project would be there, you know, very long time. So I don't see this as a meaningful reason to not do what the commission asked. I wasn't involved in that initial discussion, but just hearing this response seems, you know, Commissioner Douglas said a lack of due diligence. I would say more than that needs to have the masonry wall.
If we want to put a masonry wall there, we can. I just have to get the owner, right, as you know. And we have to have them sign off on it, as you know. And I haven't had the opportunity to be able to get a hold of them yet. You know, yeah, should I continue to do it? Sure. One thing that I did notice on the street, in that particular area, I think we might be better served, all of us, if we could look at a, if it's permissible, I do not know, but more of a fencing type of material because of drainage patterns and things like that, that we wouldn't want to cause a problem by having a total block of a masonry wall holding water on the property. And I know we can put different access points under the wall to do that, and that takes, you know, a good fall day for leaves to fall, and those get plugged up pretty well. So I, but again, I don't want to overstep my bounds with masonry is what we have to do, then that's what we'll have to do. I'm just, from a practical standpoint, I would suggest that if it's possible to do a, some sort of a solid fence along the property line, leaving it up maybe six, eight inches off the grade would allow the water to get through along with any of the leaves and that. But I don't want to, I don't want to rewrite anybody's code here, and we can definitely- And we can definitely check in on the on the owners, ownership of the property and get with them.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, while the code says masonry, I I think of the commission's intent was just that the landowners consult with. The owner of the adjacent property who may be indifferent. Um, in which case I'm not necessarily going to mandate that they put in a masonry wall. I just want to be sure that the owners of the adjacent property have been consulted.
Yeah, easy enough. It's not a problem.
Mr. Cantina.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I guess, say for the record, I I agree, I kind of take issue with this this item. I believe the applicant did make a good faith effort to respond to the other requested revisions. It seems like this one they just sort of forgot about or didn't take enough care to follow through with completely. Uh, I agree with Mr. Curtis. Because it's an Airbnb now, doesn't mean it always will be. The whole point of that requested revision. Was to provide some sort of visual protective measure for that adjacent property. That holds true regardless of the use necessarily. In terms of being able to find out who the actual owner is, I think there's there's many different ways where that public information can be found. Public record information can be found. I just don't feel that there was enough of an effort made to. To to respond to that requested revision.
Yep, okay, we hear you. We're gonna go ahead and get a hold of that homeowner or the property owner, pardon me. We'll get that taken care of.
All right, any other questions for the petitioners? We'd like to have a discussion. Let's bring it back to the side table. Is there a discussion to be had here? On our side of the table, any comments or questions for between the commissioners? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, just is this something, we often leave these things to the discretion of staff. That is approving a plan with the caveat that staff be satisfied that the petitioner has made a legitimate earnest effort. To meet the commission's desires. Mr. Hedges, is any reason we shouldn't be able to do that this time? As I will, I will say, I find the there are other things that they've done to comply with our requests are very reasonable. And I like this project from day one. So I I thank them for those efforts and and I think they're, they'll do the right thing here. Um, if indeed, Mr. Hedges, we can proceed in that fashion.
Yeah, certainly, there's no problem with that. Because what what they will be bringing forward anyway will be reviewed by the city commission anyway.
Right.
So if if it's something that, you know, either you, the mayor, or the other city commissioners have an issue with. They'll have time to address it, but we are, we can, we can look over what they propose and if if need be staff. You know, can make suggestions for revision would need be, you know, otherwise, you know, we will bring it to the city commission and. You know, see if they're in favor of it.
Great, yeah, you're right. We will have another bite at that apple and the, and I know the mayor and I will both be alert to that. Thank you.
Mr. Cantina, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate something that the applicant touched on and also what Commissioner Douglas had mentioned. I agree, I don't believe it needs to be a masonry wall. I think if the applicant brings forward something that aesthetically pleasing and meets the intent of what we're trying to accomplish. With. With whatever is going to go there, then that's fine as well.
All right, Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I'm just, again, the new guy, I think I understand. That a masonry wall being code. Um, a fence with runoff and drainage concerns is sounds like an interesting concern to pay attention to. But being, and this is my question, maybe for staff, being a P U D. That change would not require a variance from the Z B, the Z B A because it's a P U D. Sorry to use all these alphabets.
But that's correct. If it's.
Okay.
If if what they propose for screening for that area, you know, doesn't meet exactly what's required. Uh, in the zoning order, it's something that can be waived as part of the B O D development agreement. Um, and if maybe we can add that to one of the list of the other waivers I went over that that may be necessary. Uh, if if there's something that either by its height or the materials it's made of. Maybe the way, uh, may need a waiver, it can be easily addressed before this gets to the city commission.
Yeah, I I guess my thought was water management is more important than masonry wall when I do that calculus in my head, so.
Certainly.
All right. Well, I'm gonna pipe up here. I am not going to be able to support this project. I asked for the architect's seal on the drawings because while I found the concept to be a terrific concept for this site. It is clearly not a simple residential site. This is a difficult site with a number of issues that we brought up last time and we brought up this time. And I asked for the architect because we have a non-professional designing the building. And they were getting their plans sealed by a structural engineer. We had, I asked for the architect because the site requires some. Uh, experience and acumen to solve the difficult problems we presented. And in fact, they didn't get an architect, they didn't solve the problems and simply got another structural engineer, which I. Leaves me without any confidence as we go forward that this petitioner is going to get a licensed architect. I assume they're going to keep designing it themselves and just having somebody stamp it and I can't support that. I think this is a site is a great site for a project like this, but I can't support this project as it's presented. That's my view. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to add law, we're just in the law here between comments. Uh, this application is a public hearing, however, we have not received any written or recorded comments for said public.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that as part of the record.
Yes, I gotta get better at that. Thank you.
No worries.
Any other, any other comments from the commissioners or emotion? Ms. Beeky.
Um, to your point, um, could you just talk a little bit more about, I mean. The concern would be that then about not having the architectural stamp or the architect involved about the quality of the overall project or or. Is that, is that what your concern is regarding or the safety or just so I can better understand that issue?
This is, this is, Ms. Beeky, this is an architectural project. As I understand the law, it requires an architect to seal the plans that are presented to this commission. Uh, that wasn't done, but we had another shot at it, so that's why I asked for the architect. But architectural problems are not the same as engineering problems or not the same as builders' problems. Architects bring a training, education, experience and a focus and a overall understanding of projects. And how to design these things for the best use of the site. Um, that just your your average structural engineer, your average. Property owner doesn't have the experience. If you want projects that are going to be thought through, understood. Uh, from A to Z, which we do, we want the proper people involved. And I think this is a project that requires an architect. There are projects that that don't. Uh, but this one does, and that's why I asked for it. I think the law requires it. We've had, before you were on this commission, we had some of these discussions. Uh, but that's my view. Everybody who who was here earlier knows that's my view. And in this case, in particular, we asked for the architect. They said they would get an architect and then they didn't. So my confidence level went way down as to what's the tension going to be to the detail. And the other legal requirements and other requirements that go under the project. For the, for the sake of royal law, I think there should be an architect. I'm sorry, were you? Yeah, I'm, if there's anybody else who has a comment or question on the commissioners' side of the table, I would ask Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I'm interested in your opinion that this. Is required by law to have an architect's seal. Um, in fact, I I'm not sure, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it seemed like your phrase was something like. To 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 come before us, it really by law requires an architect's seal. And if that's the case, I guess I have a question for staff and. Why we're. I I don't know that that's the case, but you're an attorney in construction management, as I understand it, Mr. Chair.
I made sure I said that's my view. Not everybody shares the same view. That's where I read the statute. Is that anytime the licensing statute requires that when plans or specifications. Are presented to a governmental body with jurisdiction, an appropriate seal must be on the plans. And this is not an engineering project, this is an architectural project.
Yeah, and and I was gonna say even. I mean, that you're legal, that's your view of the law and that's great, not questioning it. But the fact that the commission asked for it specifically and it was not provided. I guess I share your concern that. What, you know, that seems to lower the confidence level was your phrase, I think, and that seems significant. In terms of approving this project, so that's my comment.
So I'm, that's my view. I've been, I don't want to belabor it too much. Like I said, there's people on the the commission that have heard this before, you haven't. Uh, but yes, I've been practicing law for over thirty years and that's my view. Any other comments or questions or emotion? You're muted, Mr. Cantina.
There we go, sorry. Um, I guess I was gonna ask if we thought it would be appropriate to ask the applicant to perhaps elaborate on their decision. Um, to not respond the way that we had requested. I know they touched on it earlier. Um, it was a, it was a brief statement, but maybe this is a good opportunity for them to elaborate on their decision to go the way they did. Because I too am a little confused as to why. Why that the architect of the project simply wouldn't feel the drawings. A, just because they should have confidence in what they're, the work that they're doing. But more importantly, to Mr. Curtis's statement, it was requested by the planning commission before it came back here. So, you know, obviously it's an issue. I think maybe it's appropriate to give the applicant an opportunity to elaborate on their decision-making and responding to that issue.
All right, you certainly may ask the question. There you can unmute yourself and then and you can pose a question there, Mr. Cantina. And I think, I think part of the answer is there is no architect involved. That's why there's no seal. I think the petitioner. You know, did the design himself. But Mr. Cantina, go ahead and unmute yourself and and address the petition.
Sure, so I will, I guess I will ask Mr. Di Martinez, since he introduced himself as the designer of the project. Uh, if the request was to bring it back with an architect's seal. Um, the decisions to have an engineer's seal on the drawings instead. If you could maybe talk to us and elaborate on why the project team decided to go that direction. Or if in fact you thought that was meeting the intent of our request or. You know, to help us understand how we are where we are.
Well, I'm sorry, I wasn't, it wasn't any malicious intent not to use the architect for this project. The code states that it just has to be done under a direct supervision of a design professional, which includes an engineer license. Or a licensed architect. But this project, we use, you know, we're using licensed civil engineers and and things of that. The project structurally is more important as far as being an apartment complex. As far as complexity for the site, which, you know, we're entrusting our civil engineers to get those things correct. The, we can most certainly use our architect to seal this. I don't want to make any issues about this with the board. I'm sorry, I thought it was more of a structural issue than a architectural. It's sort of a simple box, you know, flat construction. There's not a lot of structural difficulties to build this building. But I certainly can, you know, get the architect to sign it. I would like rather just table this project if that's possible to do that one more time. We'll find out about the fencing. We'll come back to that with a more definite answer. And we'll take care of this and I think we covered all the other issues that were asked of us from before with setbacks and parking. So I hope you guys remain confident in this project. We'll do, we'll do good by ourselves. We'll bring back both issues corrected. And hopefully in the next meeting, this will be all okay with you.
Well, like the other commissioners have expressed, I'm starting to lose a little bit of confidence because the the response that you just gave. Um, leads me to believe that you could have responded the way that we had requested originally. Perhaps didn't put enough effort forth or understood the request enough to respond correctly. And so that's another sort of detail element that is causing me to lose a little bit of confidence as well.
Still sealed by a licensed professional in the state of Michigan that will do the structural. I mean, it's not, which is really the. To me, it's the most important part of a project for the safety and welfare of the public. Um, the site was considered by the civil engineer that's licensed. So a lot of this stuff, you know, is taken care by both, the important part is taken care of by really the important engineers that need to do a project. Architecturally, but it's not, wasn't, I didn't take light of it. I'm sorry for that. And same goes for the the screen wall, but I am confident that we would come back and do it. What's your request?
All right, I would, I would just make the comment that the problems that we asked to be solved were in fact not entirely solved. That's why, that's why you would have to ask for variances this time. Now, I don't know that that wouldn't happen with an architect, but. Uh, we also don't know that it couldn't have been solved with the different professional. Abilities that the architect brings. And I would also say, just for the, for my fellow commissioners' benefit, I don't think it's a good idea, I don't think it's good public policy. To not have the right design professional for the projects. I think overall, good design is at the heart of a good built environment. And it's a, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a burdensome thing to bring an architect to an architectural project. Especially, and that's what the law requires, and I think that's what we should require. Commissioner Douglas.
So Mr. Di Martinez is correct. Our ordinance says that plans need to be sealed by. Uh, there are a variety of professionals who are authorized to provide such a seal. Um, and in many cases, that's in many projects that is acceptable to us as a commission. But to reinforce something Mr. Cantina pointed out and perhaps Mr. Curtis as well. Our conditions specifically said that the plans should be signed and sealed by a licensed architect. So this is a case where we have been specific in our request and we do see that the petitioner did not comply with that.
I understand, I understand the the question now and I think we, we. We revised the site plan, you know, listening to you for all the other options that we were given. And we followed through with those. This one we didn't and the fencing also, but it's not a lack of. You know, respect. It was just that it was interpreted differently.
Okay, but I guess I'll just make one clarification. The fact is you did not consult an architect. You made the revisions. You did not consult an architect on the problems, correct?
No, there's an architect that's also involved, but we used a structural engineer. I'm sorry, we we will have an architect. At at building permit for sure, we will use architect's seal, but we will use, we can come back with this one for the site plan approval if that's.
Well, the, okay, the the problem solving that you were tasked with, you did not consult an architect for, as far as I can tell. If you, if it.
Well, with items architecturally or required, these were site plan issues. And that's why I was just going back on the site plan. We we revised the site plan per the. The commission's recommendation. Architecturally, are we being reviewed? That's my point as far as the structure of the building or the design or the intent of the building. It's really, it was a site plan approval. So that's where the miscommunication came on our part. It was a site planner. It was all the site plan issues that a, you know, designer, architect and engineer worked together on.
All right, well, you brought an architectural project before the planning commission submitted drawings. And we had, we review them and that's. That's where the seal, architect's seal is needed from my point of view, like I said.
Okay, but.
So I would bring this back to the commissioners. Again, is there further comments, discussion or emotion? The chair cannot make a motion. Commissioner Douglas. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Curtis.
Mr. Curtis. You've been, you've been.
I was gonna make a motion to. I was gonna make a motion to table this per the applicant's request and allow them time to. and allow them time to be able to consult the, and receive an architect's seal as the commission requested.
And, and the fencing, we would like to do.
Yeah, and the fencing issue, good.
Is there a second? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll second that, and I'll just correct the language. The motion would be to postpone that to table. And, Mr. Curtis, do you want to give them a specific length of time? Is one month sufficient, do we think?
I guess that's exactly what I was thinking, and thank you, we will postpone rather than table, would be my motion for, until the next meeting, and allow the applicant time to...
And I second that motion.
Right, and it's allowing the applicant time to consult with an architect and present sealed drawings by an architect. One month.
And, and at least address, at least speak to the owner of the adjacent property.
Is that a motion to amend the, amend the motion?
Oh.
I thought Mr. Curtis said that.
No, I, I meant to include one, one month's time to be able to get the seal of the architect on the plans and address the barrier between property with the owner there.
Basically, to comply to the original.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's clear. Any further discussion on that? All right, seeing none, I will call for the vote, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Beaky?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And I am gonna vote no, but the motion passes, so the petitioner should retire to their corner, and you, you have your instructions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next issue is the, is also a public hearing, is a special land use permit and site plan for the old Nicky's Restaurant, is at 703 North Main Street. Mr. Hedges, give us the rundown.
Yes, what you have before you is a application for a special land use permit and site plan for reuse of the Nicky's Restaurant at 703 North Main Street. The petitioner is proposing to reuse the property for another restaurant. However, this one would have alcoholic beverage service as well. So, that does require a special land use permit from the planning commission. They are also proposing to reuse the outdoor cafe and to redevelop it, and that would also involve a special land use permit. As far as the actual liquor license for this property, the petitioner has already been before the city commission, their February eighth meeting, so we will, we will necessary, before the planning commission can take action, has heard. So, the planning commission is able to proceed with the review of both the special land use permit and site plan. As far as the special land use permit, though, I have nothing further to add, that it's specifically for the service of alcoholic beverages, and also to use the outdoor cafe. We would ask the petitioner to clarify one item that is in our report regarding the outdoor music on the cafe. There just appears to be some discrepancy between the report that much of the city commission and the information received on whether or not they intend to have a pipe music out on the outdoor patio or not. So, we asked them, calling up, they could clarify that. As far as the site plan goes, we had requested that two revisions be made, one regarding the parking lot. There may have been some confusion in our direction to the petitioner, but the existing seventy-two degree angled pattern they have would actually meet current zoning ordinance standards for parking lot design, just provided the stripes are lengthened to the minimum required twenty feet. There's more issues involved if they convert it to a ninety-degree pattern. They wind up needing some variances from the ZBA for the maneuvering while it and others. So, we are asking, but any consideration of the, of the site plan that they revert back to the original seventy-two degree angled parking pattern? The other item is from the director, he was looking to have a space on this place, bike lane landscape, that's currently shown as pavement now. It's immediately between where the driveway is and the outdoor cafe. Concerned mainly is it getting used for parking, it's not large enough to accommodate a parking space, and you have minimum residential requirements, the staff is recommending that, you know, the petitioner provides some form of landscaping in this area. And then it, you know, can, if they wish, and do the, either the moving the bicycle racks that are proposed to that location with it, to add more of them. Other than that, our site plan criteria are mainly our boilerplate issues. This application does require a public hearing for the special land use permit. We did not receive any important comments for this application. We did receive three written comments for the public hearing. Those have been attached to the agenda materials available online. Most of those deal mainly with public comments regarding liquor license, and not specifically what's proposed at that site. But if you want to see what, they specifically say they are available, will be online agenda materials. Does require two motions, one separate motion for the special land use permit, and then a second motion for the site plan, including the contingencies we have listed within our staff report. I don't have anything further to add, and you can answer any questions the commission may have.
Okay, I, I have a quick question that, if I looked at this correctly, I was a little confused by what you just said. Between the outdoor patio and the side street, not main street, I think they have planters there, is that...
It's, if you go in, it's kind of hard to do it verbally without pointing to the plan and showing it. But if you go, pull in the driveway and then look immediately to your right, you'll see there's a paved area between where you enter the driveway and the outdoor cafe. That area that the staff is looking to have some form of landscaping for them.
Oh, yes, there's not, there's just asphalt there.
That's it, yes.
I see, okay, now I get it, all right, thank you. All right, so, any other questions for Mr. Hedges? All right, is the petitioner here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm Kelly Allen here tonight on behalf of the petitioner. And with me on the Zoom call also are the applicants Dominic and Joe Morelli, as well as their architect Adrian Davies, and I think her partner Steve is on the call as well. And we, I would just like to briefly address, if I might, the, the concerns that Mr. Hedges just brought up. There will be no music on the outside on the patio, that was, there was a no left out of the plan of operation that I will correct with the police department. So, we are making that representation tonight, and that will be corrected. With regard to the parking spaces, that you want them to be angled and not perpendicular, we're fine with that. And, in fact, Adrian has, has already made that change, we just didn't submit it because it was past the deadline. But that has been drawn and will be submitted to Mr. Hedges' office. And then, I think with regard to this landscaped area, just a little history there. I think we, we had originally proposed putting picnic tables there, and we found that that was gonna throw us out of our, our parking calculation. So, we removed the picnic tables in that area, and we're happy to put bike racks there. We've even talked about putting a bench there. It's a little bit difficult to actually landscape, because it's, it's pavement, right? So, that would be our proposal at this point, for bike racks and a, and a bench. I think there was a bench there at one time prior to this.
All right, are there questions for the petitioner? It's Beaky? Can I unmute yourself?
I, I guess I just have a comment, I think, to that cement area that's in the front, and talking about the bench and the bikes, I think that's actually a better, a better way to use that space than to put landscaping, especially if it would be landscaping like those other raised barriers that are along the sides. Because again, if people are walking from the neighborhood, you want other than driveways for people to access. And again, bike racks wherever you can put them, again, this is a, a place that has thousands of people in walking distance and biking distance, or hundreds at least. And so, I think anything that would make it easier to access when you're not coming by car is important to keep in the design. And so, I like the idea of the bench and having some open space there. Because if you're walking from a nearby house, you don't want to have to go through the parking lot necessarily. And similarly, to have those open spaces, the way Nicky's is now, you can kind of cut through the parking lot, which, again, if you're a walker, it's easier to come in that way when you have more access, so. I'm glad to see it's getting redesigned, I've been worried about that building.
All right, are there questions for the petitioner? Mr. Gantina?
There we go. So, I just wanted to confirm the, the screening that is shown along Main Street and kind of turning the sidewalk there. What's being shown, I believe, would be in compliance with the, with the site triangles there. I just want to state that to make sure that, I do think it looks good. I think it would be nice to screen it with something that's low, so that you do get that public engagement on the sidewalk. But I do just want to make sure that the intent is to be in compliance with the site triangles at that corner as well.
It definitely is, and if you need a further explanation of what's there, I would turn that over to Adrian.
So, we would do a wood slotted screen over on Main Street, and then there are planters also, and it's gonna be a complete border.
All right. Any questions for the petitioner? I have one, so, there is a footprint increase, I think, and that's the, the walk-in cooler or that's being added to the, to the footprint, is that, I'm just curious about, originally, you wanted to have the, the parking spaces go perpendicular, and I wondered if the reason for that was the, the cooler that was going in? And are you gonna be able to make the parking spaces angled now? Given the cooler and given that, that we'd like to see them angled, is that gonna be any conflict? Are you gonna be able to deal with that?
I don't, I don't believe so, Mr. Chair, and again, the architect can, can pipe up here. But, I, I do think we, we kind of thought that the city wanted that these parking spaces to be, to be angled and not perpendicular. No, opposite of that. And the footprint itself is not getting any larger. I mean, it's the same footprint, and, and because we're taking that space on the interior there, the actual capacity, square footage, usable square footage is going down in, in the existing footprint. So, we don't, we don't believe that we have any conflict, and we're just going back to the parking the way it was, instead of the way we proposed.
Okay, you, that won't be a, an obstacle?
No.
Okay, very good, that was my question. I'll, I'll make a quick comment also about the bike rack thing, because I've ridden my bike there before, and a lot of people have, and we all generally chained our bikes to the four-foot metal fence there, which is gonna be gone, and there won't be any place to chain our bikes. And if we're behind the fence, we won't be able to see our bikes, so the bike rack, you know, pretty good idea. Any other comments or questions for the petitioner from the, on the panel? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back over to our side of the table for a discussion. And this is a special land use and a site plan. We, I think we have to vote on the special land use first, and then the site plan. So, our first order of business is, is the special land use. Are there comments from the, from the commissioners? Is there a motion or other discussion?
I'll move, I'll move to approve the special land use.
Is there a second?
Support.
For Mr. Klooster, discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
If Commissioner Beaky and I were to duke it out for proximity to this establishment, I would win, but not by much. And, and, and I know that I'm, we greatly miss Nicky's and really, really look forward to having a new establishment within such easy walking distance of our homes, or my home, anyway.
I'm very excited to be there. That's great.
All right. That was a second, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Moved by Mr. Gantina, seconded by Mr. Klooster.
Okay. Further discussion, I'll pipe in, I think that the basis of determination that we have to look at, harmonious and et cetera, et cetera, are really, are met here, in my view, because it was a restaurant before. The only difference here, really, the only difference is gonna be upgraded, and it's gonna serve alcohol. There's other alcohol-selling establishments on that strip. So, I, it's, it's really a reuse of the, of the same property, and hopefully, it'll be around and be as, and during as Nicky's was. So, hopefully, for many, many years.
Gary, you stole, you stole my thunder, I was gonna speak to my motion, but you articulated everything I was thinking quite well, so, thank you.
All right, well, very good, is there any other comments before we call for a vote? All right, seeing none, I'll call, roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
You bet.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Beaky?
Yes.
Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, and I'm looking forward to making my own omelet order there.
All right. And, and I'm, yeah, so, the motion passes, so the special land use is approved. Now, we go to the site plan, and this is not a public hearing. But, once again, Mr. Hedges, is there anything other to add? We, we have discussed some of the issues, but is there anything else to add?
Nothing to add, I will just clarify that the revised contingency one B to the state, instead of the area being landscaped, that will include, you know, bike racks and/or benches, based on your comments of the commissioner earlier in the state.
All right. Well, I have a, I have some questions for the petitioners, or one in particular, if you don't mind. I am always concerned about lighting on the site. And you're gonna have an outdoor area here, I don't know if you've completely designed your lighting fixtures, but I'd like you to tell me about what your plan, I'd also like you to tell me about your plan for the sign, which there is a pole sign there at the moment, I think, and what your plans are with those two items, if you can tell us.
I can, I can start with the, the parking lot lighting. And it's my understanding that the existing lights have been there for a long time, and we need to sort of rewire and upgrade those lights. And so, we are going to be doing that. I don't know about any other lighting, Adrian, if you want to talk about any other lighting, and also about the sign, I appreciate that.
Yes, so, we will be, we're planning on restoring those big light poles that are there on the property. And then, we're going to have some egress lighting, so there's a light to the door that goes out to the parking lot. There's also the new door that goes out to the patio, there's gonna be an egress light there as well. Under the new pergola, we're planning on some string lights. And then, some additional lights that are gonna be mounted onto the, the exterior walls. All the lights are shown on the site plan, with the landscape, no, it's the site plan, actually. Let's see, what else? And then, what was the other question?
The sign.
Oh, the sign, that's right, okay. So, with, with the sign, we're planning on demolishing the, that large sign that's there on the site right now. And we're going to do, in lettering, it's either gonna be neon, or it's gonna be LED strips that have Beppe, the, the name of the restaurant, on the, on the pergola.
Right. Um, I, I always uh, am concerned about the line. I think that sounds like a good solution, by the way. Um, other commissioners can chime as well. I'm always concerned that the, the lighting gets purchased, the lighting fixtures get purchased without uh, careful consideration of the direction and the, you know, the coverage of them. Um, I think this looks like it's going to be a very elegant and uh, and uh, attractive place. So I hope the lighting will indeed be uh, focused and pitched in the right directions on the property and all that stuff.
And that reminds me, there's another uh, light fixtures I forgot to mention. So right in the landscape area next to the patio, we're doing some uplighting onto the facade that will highlight the architecture. So yeah, we definitely are paying attention to the lighting and, and I think it will, will accent the building.
Very good. All right, um, any other questions for uh, the petitioner? Ms. Beaky.
Just so I make, just so I stay consistent, um, we don't have specific, I, I really like all of the landscaping and all of the green. And that's really great for water absorption, et cetera. And um, and the aesthetic of the plants is be, are beautiful. Um, from an environmental perspective, if there, it is feasible to have any of the native Michigan plants in the mix rather than straight ornamentals, which are mostly from Asian other places, that would be nice. Um, if it's not possible, again, it's not a man being in our zoning or anything like that. But I just mention it out of an environmental concern, if it's feasible.
Um, I think that we could, we could look into some native species. I think that's a good thing for us to, to consider.
All right, Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I had a question. My review uh, earlier, there was a walk-up window that was outside of the pergola kind of separated space, right? And there was a opportunity for some picnic tables uh, sort of outside of where alcohol would be served. But it sounds like those picnic tables are being removed for maybe bike racks and benches. Is that what I think I understand?
That's, that's correct. We um, we removed the picnic tables because it was gonna, it was going to throw our, our parking numbers off. And this is a non-conforming use on, on, on the parking. So um, instead we're, we're putting um, bike racks out there. But, but that, that, that walk-up window will still, will be there.
And, and, and some benches in lieu of picnic tables where somebody might get a sandwich and be able to sit there and have it and then ride their bike home or something if they wanted.
I think we can do that.
I'm just asking, is that the plan? I'm trying to.
Is that, is that, is that the plan, guys?
Dominic nodding over there. Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to understand.
All right, um, any other questions for the petitioners? On the site plan? All right, seeing none, uh, bring it back to side of the table and uh, ask if there is any further discussion or a motion on the site plan? Keeping in mind that the department has noted that their contingency one B should be altered to be in conformance to what we discussed here, not the landscape that area designated, but instead put bike racks and uh, benches there or bench, bench or benches. Any, any further discussion or motion?
Well, I guess I have a question. I just want to confirm i- if we, if we are approving as submitted, which configuration of the parking are we approving? I understand they're willing to keep it as it's laid out, but I just want to make sure it, from the way that the application works and the way uh, I guess if it, maybe the motion would need to be that way. But I just want to be clear on if we're approving what's being, what's been submitted, is that the parking configuration that we want?
It's a, it's a, Doug, incorrect me if I'm wrong, but contingency one A requires the angled park. So, so the proposed, the pro, proposed uh, motion would be to approve the site plan with the, with the contingencies listed except for one B, which would be changed.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Is there a motion? Mr. Klooster.
I will move to approve the site plan with the parking contingencies as stated in the staff letter. Um, and as well as revising the landscape contingency at the concrete patio area adjacent to the uh, parking area with benches and bike racks as discussed by the planning commission members.
Thank you. The second, Mr. Guntina, second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? All right, I think we've reviewed this. Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Ms. Beaky.
Yes.
Mr. Guntina.
Yes, I'm excited for you and us.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes, please.
And I'm also, yes. So the motion passes, the site plan is approved with the contingencies uh, one through seven with the alteration to one B, and we wish the petitioners the best of luck in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next order of business is a sign variance. It's sign variance, uh, SB 210305 for Citizens Bank at 200 South Main Street. Mr. Hedges.
Yes, we have a sign variance application here from Citizens Bank, 200 South Main Street. Uh, they filed a sign permit application recently to add a second wall sign to their east front facade facing Main Street. Under a sign ordinance at this location, only one wall sign is permitted for a facade. So they would need a variance to add a second sign to the east front facade. Additionally, a portion of the post sign does approach for the roof line, uh, which is not permitted under the sign ordinance. So the application would also require the second variance to allow that sign to project over the roof line of the building.
All right. Um, let's see here. All right, are the petitioners here? And can they introduce themselves and tell us about your uh, request, why uh, you need the variance? Please introduce yourself.
Well, thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Dieters. I am with Metro Signs and Lighting, 11444 Colts Avenue in Warren. And I want to thank you for considering our case this evening. Uh, as, as you may know, or be able to tell from the packet uh, that we've submitted, this site is, is going to be undergoing a renovation. And uh, we are, uh, have already secured permits to replace the signs that are on the north, east and west elevations uh, with, with new signs. Um, but there, there is an architectural feature that's being added as part of the renovation on the east elevation. And what Citizens is looking to do is to add a, in a logo element on that elevation. And um, and you could see a little bit from part of the renovation, the idea of that is to uh, to improve the aesthetics of the building to make it a little bit more attractive. And then also to accentuate uh, their, their logo, which a lot of companies are doing now. And uh, and putting, they're putting more emphasis on that as part of their branding initiative. And uh, so what we're hoping to do is even though this is not something that's going to have text, uh, it is just to display their logo. It's going to look nice on this architectural feature that they have there. Uh, we understand it here too is because of the way that's being added. Uh, part of that was as the way the uh, the, the city would view where the roof line is. Uh, this is going to partially extend above that. So that's another reason for the variance. But we think it's, it's appropriate uh, in terms of looking at how it's going to add to the aesthetics of the building. And uh, and it's just going to improve uh, the, the branding of the site. So we appreciate your consideration for that this evening.
All right, and I want to apologize. I did this backwards because I was supposed to have Mr. Hedges discuss why the variance was uh, or why the request was not granted. And I guess I, Doug, would you uh, I don't think I asked you.
Why the, what, why the permit?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you had your say there. I mean, the uh, there's a couple of issues there. Number one, I think the uh, drawings have the wrong elevation listed. I think the uh, east elevation on your drawing, Mr. Petitioner, is uh, is actually labeled the west elevation. That's the, that's the main street. That's the east elevation where you're going to add the architectural feature, correct?
Yes, one facing Main Street. It's uh, if you're looking at the second to last page of our report, the facade elevations from the architect. Then the third elevation down on the right-hand side, you'll see there's an architectural feature that extends up past the roof line of the building. And if you have a logo sign shown there, that's the sign that's in question.
Okay, so just, just to be clear, that on the, on the main street sign, there's two issues. One is that uh, that there's uh, a sign that extends above the roof line, but there's also two signs. And there was one sign. And then on the north side, there's also going to be an arc. Uh, if I, if I read this correctly, there's going to be an elevation of, of the one element of the building there, which is going to also have a sign placed upon it, which will be in fact like a, like a parapet sign.
Yeah, the building division did not specify that there were any variances necessary for the sign on the uh, north side facade. Typically, when they're together like that, the, they will review it as a rectangle around both logo and the sign lettering. Measure it as one sign.
Okay.
That could be why that one they didn't have an issue with. Whereas the ones on the east, you know, the text portion of the sign and the sign letters are separated from the logo and they view that as two separates.
Okay, so to be clear, no, nothing is required on the north side. It's really only the new main street side that we're talking about.
Yeah, specifically that's the, the logo portion of the sign on that architectural feature that extends above the roof.
All right, very good. Um, and um, I would ask the petitioner, Mr. Dieters, if I might, uh, keep talking here. Um, on the north side, is that north side connected to the um, architectural feature on the, on the main street side? Is that um, a single um, feature? Can't quite tell.
Yes, it, it will wrap around, as I understand, it's going to turn that corner from the north to the east elevations.
All right, very good. Um, are there questions for the petitioner besides uh, for me since I took over there?
I had a.
Yes, Mr. Curtis, then Mr.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I had a question actually for Mr. Hedges' staff. Uh, as I, as I understand, one of the concerns is it, the signage being above the roof line. That would require variance as the ordinance is written. Is that true?
That is correct. Under the definitions of a roof sign, under a sign ordinance, uh, it defines those as any portion of a sign that extends, that is either placed on a roof or a portion of a sign that extends above the roof line of the building.
And my next question. Yeah, thank you. And then my next sort of clarifying question has to do with roof lines. Uh, if there's a parapet, a parapet wall extending above where someone would be able to stand on a roof and the signage does not extend any higher than that parapet wall, but does extend higher than where someone could stand on a roof. Is this above the roof line and therefore require variance or is this?
That's a determination that's been made.
Thank you.
Before that it's uh, the measurement of the roof lines taken from the actual roof line of the building instead of the top of the parapet wall.
Thank you. And then for the petitioner, if I may, just really quickly, is just to rec, you know, wind can't take this sign off and throw it on the main street. How is that? Is there a parapet wall that is attached to?
You, you bet.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and yeah, so.
That's the architectural feature.
That is correct. It's going to be uh, attached to that. And that's a pretty substantial feature there as well.
Yeah. Yep, thank you.
It, it's masonry, correct?
The, the existing facade is masonry and what they're adding is, is this element here that looks like a, a wooden uh, feature that, that's going to, it somewhat softens the look of it a little bit and, and just adds to the aesthetics of the building.
Okay, the new feature will be wood.
I, I, I believe it. I'm, I'm not sure if it's a wood or a trex type of material, something that, that has the appearance of wood. I don't know exactly what that is. Sorry.
Yeah, look, you get the elevation. It, based on this, it's a composite siding.
Like a.
All right, well, um, any other uh, questions for Mr. Hedges or the petitioner or a discussion? Um, Mr. Guntina.
I think my question was answered, but I just want to confirm what I heard because it's a little difficult to tell because of the one tree that's in the way. So the, the logo feature and that architectural element, uh, so that building element that the logo feature is on is going to be new. And that element will in fact extend above the existing roof line. But there, um, both that element and the sign will together extend above the existing roof line, correct?
That, that is correct. Yes, sir. But, but, but the, the logo itself will not extend beyond the footprint that the architectural feature will have. So it's not going to be floating above that.
That's what I wanted. That was my concern. If the logo feature was going to be waving out in the wind above that roof line, but that building element will be there.
No, sir, it will not.
Thank you.
All right, um, I um, would uh, take a minute here. And a, any other comments before I, before I take a couple of minutes here? I don't see any. Okay, so this is it. Oh, um, are you waving? You want to talk? You're waving for me to talk. Okay. All right, some of you have heard this before. Some of you haven't. Mr. Curtis, I'm so glad that you showed up and asked these questions that are right on the money here, what I'm talking about. So um, the, the department um, has interpreted the uh, sign ordinance the way they have for some time. And to be consistent, they continue to do it. However, um, when I read the uh, when I read the ordinance, I, I read it differently. There's a, there's a uh, definition of a roof sign, which is a sign erected upon or above a roof or parapet wall of a building which is wholly or partially supported by said building. That's one definition. There's also a definition of a wall sign. And if I can read this into the record, a wall sign is defined, a sign which is affixed to a building facade and which does not extend beyond any horizontal or vertical end of the wall surface on which it is affixed, nor projects more than 12 inches from the building facade and which has its copy area located so as to be parallel to the wall upon which it is affixed. That is a wall sign. Now, the petitioner has presented us with something that clearly fits the definition of a wall sign. Uh, the department has been looking at these signs and saying, well, we also consider that a roof sign. So it really fits two definitions. I think it fits the wall sign. I, I, I think that this is an issue that we should probably change the ordinance or clarify the ordinance. And if I may, just take a minute here, I'm going to share the screen if I might. Does uh, does somebody have to allow me to share the screen? I don't know. Here we go. I can do it. So here's some pictures. You guys see Alma's video in the spirit uh, building there? Do you see the photographs? Folks? Okay, so these are parapet signs in my view. It, that this is, this is uh, parallel to the wall. It's on a facade. This is a wall sign, but this is something that is a style of sign that the petitioner is actually bringing to us. They're creating an architectural feature for the sole purpose, not the sole purpose, but the main purpose is to put a sign on it. So these are signs that are uh, on a facade. They're not 12 inches from the surface and they're parallel to the surface. They're wall signs. But you have this style, which I'm sure uh, you guys are familiar with. This is the old Army Navy. And this is something that you look in up and down Woodward and other places. You see, this was a style of sign that was done for years and we don't have too many of them. And the way the department has been uh, defining these, this sign would be prohibited. But to me, this is a wall sign. This is a roof sign. That's on a roof. That's a, above or, or upon a roof wholly supported by the building. These are roof signs. To me, those roof signs and, and roof signs and wall signs are two different things. I think that we have to consider, do we want to allow these signs that look like that? Because that's exactly what the petitioner is bringing. And instead of uh, you know, maybe we can grant a variance. Here's a great example here. If you consider anything that sticks above the roof line to be a wa, uh, to be a roof sign, then this is a roof sign. then this is a roof sign. This is a roof sign. Well, I don't think so. That's not what was intended by the when they passed the ordinance. This was not intended to be a roof sign. That's a wall sign that happens to stick is on a parapet. So I'm just bringing this to the to the commission's attention. I think that what we need to do is instead of making petitioner show up here to get a variance for a wall sign that happens to be on a on a parapet, I think we 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 the commissioners need to consider a clarifying this because I don't think the petitioner brought us a roof sign. He brought us a wall sign that is consistent with some of the old styles that we apparently disfavor. So that's my pitch is that needs to be looked at. The ordinance needs to be looked at and our policy needs to be looked at. So having said that, Ms. Beiki.
You're muted. My fingers are like slippery. I couldn't make my couldn't make the mouse thing slide. I just wanted to comment that again, in this opportunity, when we are working on updating the master plan, and I would assume that's going to include zoning and these kinds of ordinances that we look to adding more form based and more photo 3D supplements to our to our language in these different things as we, I would assume are going to simplify a lot of these these codes. And so I support having more clarity on that definition. And if we can do it sooner with language, perhaps that's appropriate. But otherwise, I think when we get to the point of updating, we should include those kind of visuals to be more consistent and clear with what things mean.
All right. And just to be clear, from my point of view, this petitioner would have to show up anyways because they have two signs on its side. They'd still have to be here, but I think that we ought to make a decision about these parapet signs in the future. All right, any further discussion or a motion regarding the petitioner's request for this sign variance? Commissioner Douglas? Oh, you're still muted.
Um, so if they lowered their logo, they'd still have two signs on the east facade, but they wouldn't have a roof sign, right, Mr. Hedges?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
It's Curtis.
Yeah, I I kind of would agree with the chair that they really don't have a roof sign, but that's my interpretation of signage as well. But I did want to ask this question because you said change ordinance and then you said review policy. So I don't know the commission's power here, so I'm asking. I don't know that the commission can really instruct staff to change the way they interpret the ordinance, right? I don't know. That's a question. But it seems two different things, an ordinance versus a policy of how you interpret the ordinance, right?
Well, yes, it it you're you're, yes. But the ordinance is a reflection of public policy. We don't write that. You're right, we don't enact the public policy. We're appointees, the elected officials do that. We have some ability to recommend to the city commission to change the ordinance. And we do that through working with the department. So we could make a recommendation that we wanted language clarified, but there is a policy here because the type of sign we're talking about, this petitioner has brought to us, is I'm going to put an architectural feature up pretty much for the reason of putting a sign on it. And is that something that we want to encourage or discourage or do we care? So there are two different questions. And you had a further comment, Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I actually was ready to make a motion and put this petitioner out of their misery and listening to us argue over whether that's a wall sign or a roof sign. I would move to grant the variance as requested.
Second by Ms. Beiki. All right, is there further discussion about this particular request? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'm not going to support the motion. We've been very clear here in this body that signs are for wayfinding. And this, the additional logo, use of the logo, repeating a logo that already is attached to the name citizens, to me, is 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 branding. It's smart branding. I work in marketing. I I would be pitching this, but I don't think it contributes to the to the wayfinding. So I won't support the motion.
Any other comments? Ms. Beiki?
I I guess for the the renovation of this building, from my perspective, that looks like an aesthetic artistic addition. Whether or not it's a logo, I wouldn't recognize it as such. And so that's why I'm supporting it.
Any further comments? Mr. Gantina?
Yes, I guess I I agree with the the opinions that I believe it's a wall sign and I don't believe the it should be considered as a roof sign and that be part of the issue here. I do happen to agree with Commissioner Douglas, though, that absent of the other signage on the building, I might have a different opinion, but this is sort of repetitive in nature. It's quite large. There already is a sign with that same logo. And if that the addition of this other sign is throwing them into this issue of needing a variance, I just I don't see the value in granting it here. So I'm not going to be able to support it.
The other, well, let me ask Mr. Hedges a question. We could, I mean, there's two signs there. So how do we address that? Let's say we it it's just a straight up or down because maybe maybe they could leave one sign and take the other one down. And I guess they have to choose which one to do. If if there's a a a motion to deny and it's based on the fact there's two signs there, I guess I guess we have to leave it to the petitioner. That's what I would understand. Is that right, Mr. Doug?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. All right, any other comments about about this? We have had a couple. We have a motion. We have a second, but we are we ready to vote? I think we probably are. So I will call for the vote. Let's start with Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Douglas?
No.
Mr. Klooster?
No.
Ms. Beiki?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
No.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And I am going to vote no. I think they only should have one sign there. I think it ought to be on the parapet, but I I have no say about that. So the request for the sign variance doesn't pass. And so I'm afraid you'll have to go back to the drawing board. Comment by Ms. Douglas.
I would like to introduce a motion to deny the variance.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gantina. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Mayor?
No.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Ms. Beiki?
I feel like this is like a mind game. Now I'm going to say no.
That's correct. You got to do it, I mean, whatever you want. But if you want to be consistent, Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Oh.
And I am going to say yes. So the motion to deny passes. So I jumped the gun there. Commissioner Douglas, you're always better at the parliamentary stuff than I am. Forgot about the having the motion to deny. So now the committee, the petitioner would have to go back to the drawing board. Any other comments? Questions, none? All right, well, very good. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the next issue. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, next issue is the discussion topics for the joint meeting with the zoning board, lot size, density, street parking and other standards for multifamily housing and or dwellings. And this is the, of course, the issue about some of the questions we might want to put to the public, et cetera, et cetera. And I see Ms. Davids is here. Doug, do you want to introduce this issue? Are you going to? Should we go right to our community outreach specialists?
Yeah, I can give it just a brief introduction. You know, at the last meeting, you did ask for examples of a public engagement process for what have been numerically called the zoning ordinance text amendments for missing middle housing. Ms. Davids has put together some possible methods of doing that engagement. But I would like to add, as we discussed earlier during the capital improvement program, in the draft budget for the next fiscal year, there is an amount for the master plan and zoning ordinance process during which there would be much public engagement for not only this topic but others as well. So, you know, provided that remains in the budget and adopted by the city commission, this would possibly be, you know, could be involved with that. There would not be a need for a separate engagement process for for just that item. But as I said, Ms. Davids has presented something for your review and I can refer to her for any questions or if she would like go over what she's presented.
All right, and just to be clear, Judy, you're muted, but just to be clear. So with the advent of the master plan being budgeted, I I think what you're saying is it wouldn't make sense to have necessarily make sense to have a separate community engagement for these specific issues when we're going to have a complete or near complete discussion of the master plan as a whole. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hedges before I address Ms. Davids? Okay, Judy, welcome. Nice to see you.
Thanks, good to see you too. So so you guys may not need an engagement plan. Is that what I'm hearing? Because basically I have a presentation and I can share my screen. I have a presentation. It just kind of gives you an introduction to some of the things I do. So would is that okay to present that?
That's okay. Let me ask you a question before you start, though. Have you been involved in a master plan process before?
Have not.
All right, well, maybe you're gonna. So, all right, are there questions for Ms. Davis before she begins? All right. Please proceed.
So this is this this presentation is put together. Basically, you guys can see my screen now, right?
Yes.
So this this presentation is basically put together letting you know kind of what I do and kind of what I watched your meeting live the night that you had it. And then I I also listened to it again. And so some of the things that I heard that you were looking for, you were you were trying to get some community engagement around. I think it was like eight different topics. So some of the some of the key words I heard out of your conversation were things like the simpler the better, big believer in SAQs, so am I, maybe doing a survey. I heard storytelling was important, looking for like focus feedback, trust. I heard town hall or virtual town hall and I heard the word educate. So I wanted to show you guys some examples of some things that the city has worked on in the last couple of years that kind of hit on some of these points that you were looking after. Okay. I see here. There we go. Okay, so the simpler the better. So we did an engagement plan around stormwater and how it works and perhaps introducing a stormwater utility. And it is very, very complex. I went to dozens of meetings and I I never really understood it until I had to explain it to somebody else and then it began to make sense. So in if you go to romy.gov/stormwater, you can see some of the things we did. I think every good community process starts with a really well designed webpage with that includes SAQs and resources and things like that. We, in this case, we did videos and house to explain this very complex topic of how stormwater works. I think they were pretty successful. They were, it was storytelling, you know, with pretty pictures. And I think it did a good, I think it was effective in telling people how stormwater works, how the whole process works. We did in person town halls. And one of the things we did with the in person town halls is we we had multiple in person town halls, but they were catered to like different audiences. So we so we might do, so we did like some for residents, some for churches, some for businesses, and each one was really focused on the audience. We have a really fantastic person in City Hall that's an expert in GIS. So if you have anything that involves maps and math, you probably can invent a special tool for it that helps the public understand things. In this case, we had maps that showed the hard surfaces of your property and then you use that calculator tool and it would tell you how your water bill might change, how it might go up or down. We did a lot of, people asked a lot of questions and every time somebody asked a question, we answered, we added it to SAQs. We did a two page insert in Insight magazine that cost around $6,000. But Insight goes, Insight go, actually, Insight is free. That's the city magazine. We also included in Royal Oak today and that was what costs money. But both of those, there's two magazines that go to every address in Royal Oak, not just to, you know, it's not just sent to like a property owner or something like that. It goes to every address. If you live in an apartment, you get it. So we did that. Again, lots of pretty pictures, trying to explain the concept. And then we had a dedicated hotline with trained operators at City Hall that were on standby to answer any questions. Let me try to go over here again and see if I can. Okay. Trust, one example of something we did with that was we did information session and we also did a third party survey on marijuana. What the commission heard was, wow, as we know, 70% of Royal Oakers voted to legalize marijuana. But what the commission was hearing from some very vocal people is, well, we didn't mean we wanted to have it sold in Royal Oak when we voted yes. We just wanted to decriminalize it. So we ended up, there was like an issue of trust, like I don't know how to explain it. But people, you know, we we realized we needed a third party to go out and ask people like, what did you mean when you voted yes? And it's no surprise that people, when they voted yes, they also wanted to purchase marijuana in Royal Oak. But when you use a third party researcher, like it does add a lot of value. They write the questions in a way that's very, there's there's no bias. They are, they they choose the sample. They make sure that the that people that get the surveys match the demographics of our city. So and then they do the presentation, then they present the results. We don't. And and I think that we what we always use Cobalt Community Research out of Lansing. I think they do a really great job. And we did an information session for the commissioners and we had three expert speakers. So that added a lot of value. It helped the in it was televised though in in explaining the issues to the commission and also explained the issues to the public. And we had a lot of questions on marijuana and we organized them by, you know, questions like what would it do to our image? What would it do, you know? How does it impact law enforcement? What are some of the legal aspects? And we answered all those on a website. Okay, and a virtual town hall. We recently did some engagement on parking in downtown Royal Oak. We, the police had been long kind of looking for new solutions for our parking system. They had a solution that they liked a lot. The solution wasn't very controversial at all, other than the fact that it comes with a maybe parking tickets are maybe double. So we had to make sure that people, while they might like all the bells and whistles of this new system, they also had to realize that they might get a $20 ticket now instead of a $10 ticket. So we wanted to make sure that people really understood the system and and see if they liked it. So we began with a really broad survey where we talked about parking. That kind of brought people in, just asked sort of general questions about parking. And we threw in some of the things, some of the features that this new parking system offered. Because if people weren't interested in like the new things that offer, it really wasn't any point like going any further. Oh, it turns out some of the things that this new system offers, people really were interested in. More importantly, from the 1,300, so we had 1,300 people take a survey in two and a half weeks. So I will tell you that Royal Oakers really love a good survey. We rarely have, we routinely get like 1,500 people to take a survey. It's not very hard and and in a very quick time. So from that 1,300, one of the things that was really cool is we called, we tried to call a focus group out of those, out of that just broad survey. Out of the 1,300 respondents, we had 400, about 400 people that said that they would be willing to be part of a more, to be part of a more focused discussion on parking. We did have that, we and we did. On parking. Um, we did have that, we, and we did do a virtual um, town hall. The chief would have loved nothing more than to do it in person. He's a kind of like, you know, wants to look you in the eye. Type of person. We knew we couldn't do that with COVID. Um, we were really delighted by the um, virtual town hall we did. We had really great feedback. People felt they learned a lot and uh, we did some polling, live polling right at the, right at the town hall. So people. Um, after we gave them a presentation on the parking system, people could look at it and commented on instant, comment. Instantly on what they liked or didn't like. Um, it overall, it just went uh, really, really well and it was all um. Taped and you could watch it on WROK and uh, online. So that, that was, I think. Virtual town halls are very easy to pull off and um, people seem to like them. It, so, and then let's see, oh, we're hammering this game. And then um, I just wanted to show an example of a storytelling survey. Um. The engineering department is looking at some like trapping, traffic calming um, elements that they could possibly put in in the neighborhood that's. Sort of near Beaumont between Woodward and Coolidge on the um, south of 13 Mile. So. Um, they, we spent, this was a very focused survey. It only went to people that lived in those, those neighborhoods. And we had, there was pictures that kind of explained. You know, some of the directions that they could go and they had a really great response. Um. And it was really, I, I sort of peeked at the results and it was really kind of obvious what people um. Preferred the most. It wasn't like, wow, gosh, they, you know, like, nobody likes anything or like, you know. There, there was like kind of a overwhelming uh, winner of the um, way people wanted to go on that neighborhood. All right, and, and whoops. Uh-oh. Oh, I think I. Now what have I done? There we go. Um, I just wanted to put in a little uh, chart about um, kind of what things cost. A lot of things we do in-house, some things take longer than others. Some, some things, when you get into expert speakers, we've had attorneys speak and they can be pricey. I, I have no idea what. An expert speaker would cost um, to talk about the topics that you want to discuss. Um, but I'm sure we can find somebody. I'm sure you all now probably know people that could do it. Uh, to do a third-party survey is quite expensive. It's about six grand, um, three, three, I'm sorry, $3,000 to $6,000. Um, and then videos, we can do them in-house or you could hire a. Somebody to produce it for you. Um, we've done kind of bowls in the past. Um, GIs we do in-house, magazine inserts can be free if they're in Insight. You might have to pay to have them in other magazines. So this kind of goes through that and kind of goes through the time involved. And. So this is what I was going to present to you, but this might all not even matter now, cause you might be going a completely different direction, but. In terms of talking about the, those eight topics that you were originally planning to talk about, let's see. Um, I was thinking something along the lines of this. Of course, we're going to start with a great webpage. It's going to have definitions, key issues, resources, examples, FAQ, all those kind of things. But that's, you know, there's your like educate, um, the simpler, the better, lots of pictures where we can use pictures to explain something. Um, that takes, you know, the times I put along since, I put some times along the bottom of like how long things take. But that's how long it takes me to do my part. Um, it, that's sort of like. Um, the bake time, the prep time, what is like what you got, you guys need to give me information. Obviously, I don't think you want me to. You know, be that you're expert speaker on this. I wouldn't even know where to begin, but um. You know, once you give me something, I can, it, this is how long it took me to do my part. And so anyways, I would, I always recommend that we start with a really great um, webpage that we can um, lead people to. Then I would suggest, you know, maybe doing an info session, kind of like we did for marijuana, which is ju- which is basically just a real, really. Broad conversation about um, you know, the topics that we want to discuss and why it's important. Um, ideally, something like this wouldn't last longer than an hour. I think you'll lose people if it's too long. I don't think people want to give up a Saturday to do this. But. Think that um, you can construct it so it goes really quickly. Um, as, and uh. You know, some, you may want to use more than one um, expert speaker. And I always think it's kind of good to have some live um, surveys built right into the presentation so you can kind of immediately get feedback. Of what, where people said are, um, one of the things I love about virtual is you put everybody in a waiting room and they can't, they can't always talk. Um, because sometimes people can like just take over your, your, the, the conversation and it's really, they, they really should be there to listen. Um, but we do want to know what they think. So um, offering like these um, pop-up surveys right inside your presentation is a great way. To let everybody comment, not just the people that aren't shy, you know, the people that have a lot of bravado and want to like. Tell you what they think, but just allow everybody's, you know, give an opportunity to hear everybody's opinion. So something like that, that, you know, that's to build trust. And again, we're doing the simpler, the better. Um, possibly a survey and that. And then um, the, the main point though of um. The info section would be to try to um, call a focus group out of that group of people. So um, hoping that after the presentation, there's some more, there's some people. That saw that presentation that we want to do a deeper dive and learn more and be, and offer feedback. Um, then we could do, um, and then we could next do like a webinar with a um, kind of like we did for parking with a. Trusted presenter, show some options, show examples. Um, and then uh, ultimately. Um, you know, do like a very specific survey with the people that were part of the focus group. This. I, I'm still not sure. I will listen to your meeting like three times and I'm still not sure what you want. So it, it's pretty. Complex and I don't think you just want to throw a survey out there on Facebook and just let anybody give you their opinion. I feel like you. You really have to get people that are willing to give, to be educated on these things and learn all the details before they give you. Um, any kind of feedback at all. So I'm sorry, I'm just going through everything really quickly. Um, there's, the, the possibilities are. Are endless, really. We can, I really feel confident that we can do anything that you need us to do. Um, but again. Um, it, we will be, I, I, um, if we bring in our GIS people, like we will need a lot of direction. So I guess that's it for my presentation. I can. Here, I have to stop sharing my screen. There you go.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for our presenter, our community outreach specialist? I, if you guys don't have them, I, I have a couple if you don't mind. Uh, Ms. Bickie, you go ahead.
I just want to say first, I really enjoyed um, hearing that and looking at it earlier and I watched the stormwater video, which I hadn't seen before, which I, I appreciated. I guess my, and I like all of, I like all of these concepts and I like the way you put it together. Um, the one thing that I'm consistently concerned about in Royal Oak is, is. How are we collecting information from people who aren't oriented towards using those technologies? Um, in, 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 and also, uh, when was the last time we did a full like citizen survey? A few years ago. Like there was a one about Dearborn that I really liked, which I've kept now um, in my files for a long time. Just to really solicit people whether they're sitting in a, well, now we don't sit in cafes, so that's whatever, whether they're around in the, although we can't go anywhere. You know, old time when we used to sit out, but to get people who might be more inclined to provide answers in writing. On a piece of paper rather than going through this. I'm just wondering where are those engagement points that we use? Either we could use or we just use regularly generally.
Sure. So we do do a customer satisfaction survey in Royal Oak every two years. We actually did one that we started um. Last year, at the end of 2020. It is mailed out, so you, so it does, um, it does. You don't need any technology. You just need eyes and, you know, and a pen and to turn it, to turn it in. That got, that kind of got delayed by the mail. Um, uh, some of the mail problems over the holidays, so. Uh, that will be, that the result that, that survey will be given at the next city commission meeting. So uh, we do do some like old-fashioned ways. That survey that comes in the mail can also be answered online. I will tell you when we did our parking. Focus group that uh, we, people, we always ask people for their age and their gender and. We even ask them like what zip code they live in, because sometimes we want to kind of see like what do people that don't live in Royal Oak think versus people that do. And also there's a really big difference in how people that live in six, seven feel versus seven, three. It's weird. But there is. Um, and so we do that and, and we found in the parking survey that 15% of the people. No, yeah, 15% of the people that took, that participated in the focus group were 65 or older and I believe. The US Census will tell you that 14% of people in Royal Oak are 65 and older. So we got, we, we do hear from them, but they do tend to skew more text savvy. We have done, um, we do always like to have a phone. A solution. We always like to put a phone, phone number on something. We, we, we have the ability at the city to create like a special number that's like, you know. 3777 or, you know, 3411 or something, you know, like a kind of catchy number and we have trained operators before. Um, we can fill out a survey for you online. We can answer questions online, but that's a really great point. We're working really hard. Commissioner Douglas is part of it. We're working really hard to be better at engaging um, people that aren't so tech savvy, but as a rule. We always like to have a, a phone call solution too. So we hear from everyone. Hope that answered your question.
Then I'll just make one quick follow-up comment. Um, if you are working on it, I think things that are visual um. Aids that are in public places, like inside of the parking garages or on, we don't have any really poster areas or. You know, outside of City Hall, something that, that is a visible follow-up to all these kinds of informational points, even with website guidance. Can be really helpful as you think that through, um, just on past stuff I've worked on.
Thank you. That's a great suggestion. Anyone else?
I have, I have a comment. I, I have not been involved in master plan before myself. And I assume that in the past, the consultant comes in, they have a program that they use over and over again. But it sounds to me like, you know, the consultant is, in this case, has got a couple of things. Number one, that the world has evolved in the last 12 months. And it sounds like you, Judy, have also, you were always good at this web-based stuff already, but it sounds like you've been forced to. To uh, do more of that. And you know our city and you know our people. I was fascinated by you. Saying that you had specific audience targeted uh, presentations for the stormwater. Uh, this may be a good idea, but. Uh, so I guess my comment is this, and I, we probably don't, maybe we don't have anything to say about this, but it seems to me that when the consultant comes in to do the master plan. Um, one of the user group people that they might want to consult is our community outreach director, because. Uh, that's a conduit to, to our citizens. So it sounds like you, you, you know how to reach them. And to the extent that we want to do that during the master plan, um, not that I want to dump work on you. I'm sure you got plenty to do, but maybe you, you do want to be engaged to, to some extent with that program.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you, like when we, when um, the city did um, community engagement on the downtown park and even on Norman D Oaks. Um, that there was a, uh, the designer was also like, uh, charged with doing community engagement. And um, they kind of led the process, but they, I worked really closely with them and gave lots of input. And um, and we ended up like doing presentations at like conferences uh, around the state. About the community engagement on that process. It was really led by them, but with um, with some feedback from myself. And I think that was very successful too. So I'm used to working, I mean, I, I'll do whatever you ask of me. I'll always say yes, whatever it is. If I can't do it, I'll find a way to do it. But, and I also will, you know, you also won't hurt my feeling if you hire, my feelings if you. Hire a consultant, but um, that consultant could know that I have their back. If they need anything at all, I'm willing to help.
Great. Appreciate it. And it sounds like uh, you probably will have some involvement. Uh, any other comments or questions for our guest? Mr. Guntina.
I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for putting that together. It really did um, a great job of explaining, um, you know, one, what you do. Uh, but also the different options that are available. In particular, I was, you know, I, I was going to have a question around timeframes. Um, but you had a slide on that as well. So just wanted to say thank you. I think it was a great presentation and it was really, very informative for me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas.
I said this at the city commission meeting last night, but I'll say it again here as well. Royal Oak is knocking it out of the ballpark among cities its size for the amount of public engagement it does. And the levels and types of engagement and the tools that it uses. Um, I'm involved with both MML and the Michigan Association of Planning and I hear a lot about what other communities are doing. And again. Uh, no communities of our size are this advanced in this, in this discipline and I credit Ms. Davis for that. Um, and in fact, I'm on a, a panel um, at SEMCOG next month, uh, where they will be talking about uh, using research in communities. Um, and the fellow, fellow panelists will be from Cobalt Research who does our um, quantitative studies uh, as well. So, I mean, Royal Oak is recognized for its success using those tools and, and I again, credit Ms. Davis for her. Um, diligence and foresight and you should never say that you'll always say yes, just.
I know, my mom tells me that too.
Manage expectations just a little bit.
Okay, well, I'll try to say no, but it's hard. I really love my city and I love my job.
Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I might offer, uh, yes, I can't do that. It might be a yes way to do that. But um, the uh, the, the. Original question Mr. Hedges brought up about um, whether this is also needed, right? There were. Uh, one concern about if, if, I guess it would be more next year, master plan work would involve a consultant. And all sorts of community involvement. Do we also need something now was a question? And I, I don't really have an answer to this question. I kind of like to pose a question to the commission for the sake of discussion. My inclination is the more public engagement, the better. Uh, to Commissioner Douglas's point about how we're doing a great job of that. Let's keep doing a great job of that. Um, so, but what does the commission think about that original question? I, I would lean towards the more the merrier when it comes to uh, community engagement, but I don't know if there's other opinions. I'd love to hear.
Um, I, I think, if I remember correctly, at the beginning, the issue was that they're gonna, if there's going to be a master plan, it's going to subsume. What we talked about last month. That's what I understood. And that's what I, my comment was about. The Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I've given this a fair amount of thought. Uh, so the, our discussion last month, in our discussion last month, there are one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 sort of items or, or, or subsets of our discussion. Um, and to me, there are portions of that that are well-suited to be addressed as part of a, a master plan. But there are some others that maybe we want to deal with now on a more timely basis. They're not as conceptual and policy-oriented. They're more nuts and bolts. Um, the, the questions of uh, missing middle housing. Um, uh, allowing um, uh, duplexes, for example, in all residential districts, accessory dwelling units. To me, those are part of a, a larger discussion. But there were at least three items um, where. And, and they had to do with um, reducing minimum, reducing lot coverage for multifamily. Um, making lot, changing the area, a lot area for duplexes, um, reducing a lot within setbacks for houses on corner lots. Where we saw that um, a majority, a, a, an overwhelming majority of the buildings in that classification. Are out of compliance, just have cut, fallen out of compliance over the years. So that we could perhaps do a, a much more focused study just about those lot um, size and setback issues. Um, and, and solve some problems um, uh, that come before us. And, and I would also say. Uh, the issue of setback requirements um, in multifamily zoning or where multifamily is in a commercial or mixed-use zone. The idea that, I mean, look at the um, residential units that are developments that we've seen uh, pop up on 11 Mile in Washington. Um, where a setback that is consistent with the other commercial buildings in that corridor is much more conforming and pleasing. Than the very severe uh, large setbacks that now are required of a multifamily building. So it might be that there's a, a, an opportunity to do a, a more narrowly, you know, focused nuts and bolts discussion. So it might be that there's a, an opportunity to do a, a more narrowly, you know, focused nuts and bolts discussion. Um, and I, and I like the idea of a, um, uh, uh, doing an educational session. I mean, this is technical, um, and I had, I had thought about, um, you know, having looked at, at Ms. David's document here, uh, a, a session with an explanation of setbacks and, and those, and those sorts of things. Um, and invite people to come and observe it and those who, who participate, who watch the whole session then can apply to be part of one of these focus groups that Ms. Davids has discussed, where you take a subset of all of the people who listened to it and now understand the issues and bring them in to talk about some of these proposed, uh, changes.
Well, I think that to the extent that there are narrow issues that don't need to get hashed out of the master plan or, or, or there's still going to be interest that might be affected. And if there are interests affected, then there shouldn't, the process should be iterative, where there's a loop, feedback loop from the public. And if that's going to be iterative, then we need what Ms. Davids is talking about here for those, even if it is on a limited, more limited basis. Is iterative process is what is what we're trying to get at here. So we're not making decisions without getting feedback. So, Ms. Beeky?
And I, as far as the, the, the question posed, whether some of these things should be with the master plan, um, or, or some we can, can do sooner. I personally think setbacks are one of the ones that actually should be with the master plan because I do think, again, in, and in, in, with the environmental advisory board, you're working on sustainability issues and so it gets into the green space issues. On the other hand, to go, not to go completely against what you're saying, but a different opinion. In terms of a part of the, getting citizen input is also an educational process in and of itself, just, just asking people what they think is part of them learning about the topic and I, and I feel like setbacks is when it's, again, complicated. So maybe what you were describing with the, the educational component stuff would work. But I think with the missing middle issue, um, and again, I'm not, I've only been back now about five years. So I'm not completely familiar with all the different discussions over the years and how much the citizens have been engaged. I feel like the missing middle issue, um, and the diversity of choices that fall between what we've seen as our large apartment construction and our single-family homes, without even getting to, into where you might put them, although you could ask people if this were to happen in your neighborhood or next door to you, to show people the different options and talk about, would you like this one or would you prioritize? Or which ones do you like the best when you see them on the street? But again, using something very visual, visual could be an interesting process by which to give people images and to think about this and to ask them to think about what they see in the, in the city that they like as a precursor to the master plan, so that they're kind of primed. Like we do need these things. Now let's talk about all the different kinds and which ones you like. And we could start to get a kind of a rank view, what people think they, um, would prefer. Because I think when it comes to like the duplex next door, people's fears when you use the terminology are going to be different or they may be abated once they learn, again, by visualizing options and telling us which ones they rank and why. I think you could get people persuaded, um, or just up to date on what the options are that may be less offensive once they see them. And I think it may, would be easier to do in this context than, than the, than the, um, setbacks personally. Um, but just, that's just my thinking. If we were to do something ahead of time. Otherwise, I do think the master plan is going to have to be robust and very layered because you do have the educational component that comes along with when you're asking opinions.
All right. I don't want to, uh, extenuate the discussion, but do we have any idea, Commissioner Douglas or Mr. Hedges, about when a master plan, uh, program might be launched? How long that might take before it's initiated?
Um, I can't say. I just found out about the budget item earlier today.
Oh.
So, um, I think cities, cities have to look at their master plans every five years. Uh, we weren't scheduled to do so until 2022. We last looked at ours in 2017. So this would put us, you know, a year earlier than that. Um, you know, how long does it take? You know, it can take anywhere from eighteen months to two years to do the entire process. But how close we are right now, I, that's, I think a better question for, uh, the city commission. I, I don't know. If, if it gets in the, the budget, then after July first, staff will obviously begin the process of preparing an R F P for the process, but at this time, I don't have many other answers.
All right. Um, Commissioner Douglas is going to make a comment.
Yeah, it's, and Mr. Hedges said this, I mean, this is in the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. So indeed, if we began the process at, at the beginning of that fiscal year in July, when, you know, going through the R F P process, choosing a, a consultant, because this is clearly something you're using an outside consultant for, it wouldn't be until 2022 at the earliest that we completed the process. So in fact, we'd be right on time with our master, our required master plan update. And, and Mr. Hedges is right too. This can take eighteen months to two years and a lot of that is going to be driven by, uh, the ability to meet in person. Um, digital meetings just sort of e- e- extend the, 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 the process um, and, um, require different forms of notifications. So that's, that partly will drive the timing. Um, so there are elements of our discussion that, that, you know, maybe we want to address in less than two years as we, as the planning commission see all of these planned unit developments coming in front of us. And they're coming in front of us because of the, largely because of, you know, setbacks and, and building height and configuration issues. Um, and if we want to address that in advance of the whole master planning process, I, I would remain open to that possibility.
All right. Hmm. Well, should be, should be interesting once it gets going, but it looks like it'll be a little bit down the road. So we might still consider whether or not we want to focus on a particular issue or two, uh, between now and then. It's still, you know, whatever that is for, for, four and a half months from now, so. Before we even start the master plan. So, all right. Any other comments, Ms. Beeky?
No, I was just going to say that, I was just gonna, but the comment I had was, it was listening to this and hearing the options that, that Judy, uh, Ms. Davis, Davids presented and, and what Shar had said, um, I just wondered if we should just have this as a placeholder on the next discussion and think about, you know, what might be the things we feel strongly would be, need to push forward, um, if we can't decide right now in terms of topics that might precede. Now that we know that the master plan is in, this is all kind of a little bit new information at, coming at the same time. I don't know.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, just a thought. Um, so I, I mean, I sort of made a list of just a bullet points of, of the items that are in the longer document that we saw last month. Maybe ask staff to take each of those bullet points and do a mini poll with the, uh, the planning commissioners. You know, how important, you know, should we address this immediately? Or do we roll this into a more lengthy master planning process and just sort of quantify where we all are on those subjects?
It seems like, uh, something that could be done. Otherwise, if we don't do it through the department, then, um, then we won't do it until we come to the next meeting and we wouldn't have time to think about it. Or we'll have time to think about it, but we won't have time to discuss it.
We, we did go through this process a little bit already. I think we, we went through a list of topics and sort of said, these are definitely longer-term master plan items. These are low-hanging fruit that we should deal with now. Um, just so that I'm clear, Commissioner Douglas, the, this is the low-hanging fruit we should deal with now. That's predominantly the list of, I think, the eleven subcategories you had mentioned previously. But there was a longer list that.
Actually, we get some low-hanging fruit, um, from, we, we dealt with a couple of, some of the issues already from our joint meeting with the zoning board. But these are the eleven topics that remained on that list. Um, and if you go to our last meeting, uh, the full document is attached to our last meeting. Uh, for example, our last meeting, we did, there, there was one item on that list of, uh, creating a community belt, community benefits policy. And I think we agreed at that time that we would strike that from this list because the city commission is already addressing that subject.
So this would be sort of another culling of that list in terms of what we think is long-term versus short-term.
Right.
Yeah, I support that.
All right. I'll dig that thing out. The one that Commissioner Douglas has in front of her. All right. Other, um, yep, there it is. Um, all right. Other comments or questions about this or other topics? We do have one more agenda item, um, so I can, uh, probably should, uh, thank, uh, Ms. Davids. Uh, great job. Thank you very much. It clearly stirred us up and, uh, so we appreciate it. And I'm sure we'll see you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Good night, everyone. Good job.
All right. We have one more agenda item, which is the notice of intent to amend the master plan from the city of, city of Huntington Woods. And there is a letter announcement in our packet. Uh, Mr. Hedges, do you have anything, uh, you'd like to, uh, bring to our attention here?
No, nothing further to add. It's just under the state, uh, enabling acts. Whenever a community does either begin a process of updating their master plan or if they adopt a new one, they do have to notify adjoining communities. Uh, that's what Huntington Woods has done. There is contact information, I believe, within their letter that should you want to offer, you know, comments or seek additional information denied. But it's just something that's required by state law that we have to forward to commissioners when an adjoining community, uh, takes action on their master plan.
Okay. And this, they're, they're announcing an amendment, so that's probably the five-year thing.
Yeah, well, it's, there are different things you have to send notices for. If you make a decision to amend your master plan, you have to send notices to adjoining communities. Um, if you present a draft plan for public hearing, you have to notify again. And then if you do adopt a new plan or amendment, you again have to notify. So it's possible you could wind up sending three or more notices to adjoining communities throughout the whole process. But I believe this one, they're just, they've decided to go forward and amend their plan and they're just notifying communities of their intent.
All right. We'll be sending one of these out.
Yes, we will.
All right. Uh, very good. Any questions on this topic for Mr. Hedges or discussion? All right. Seeing none. Uh, no action is required, I don't believe.
Nope, no actions required.
So the next, uh, issue is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
There's a second. If you can, Tina, seconds. I'll call for the vote by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Quick question for everyone. Um, I didn't get, who made the motion in support to approve the minutes in the last meeting?
I'm, I made the motion.
Okay. Who, who supported it?
I think I did.
Okay. I'll check the video, but sometimes that's inaccurate way to do it. I just wanted to make sure.
All right.
That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Um, and, um, we, uh, appreciate you working through the technical issues at the beginning. It was quite a little bit of a comedy, uh, now looking back.
Well, I can think of another word for it.
At the time I was panicking, by the way. Now it's funny. All right.
I thought I was the only one not on since my computer was giving, my internet was giving me so much trouble last time. Anyway.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you.